Good evening. Good evening, thank you for joining us here at the April 8th edition of the Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners Cemetery Commissioners meeting. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
Before we get started, it's a pretty good crowd tonight, but I just want to...
Oh, Mr. Sullivan, hold on.
That's right, sorry.
I also have to announce that this meeting is being recorded. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. We have a pretty good crowd tonight, looks like we're gonna have good audience participation, but I just want to thank all the children at present that stood and just said the Pledge of Allegiance. You guys did an excellent job, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, first on the agenda, we have citizen comments, so there any citizens here that would like to speak on something that is not on this evening's agenda? Seeing no one. Next on the agenda, why I bet most of you are here, public business, playground presentation, Mike Radner, Radner Design Associates. Before I turn it over to Mike, I just wanted to thank both the donors that donated to the playground fund as well as the Dudley Women's Club for organizing that donation drive. Through that, we were able to have the funds to pay for the study so that we can go for a grant and rehabilitate that playground. So, Mr. Radner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, everybody. My name's Michael, with me tonight is Holly, and we are landscape architects. I'm not gonna get into a big explanation about what that means, but we are gonna draw the plans for the new playground, which is gonna happen right outside here on the site of the town hall. So, I'm gonna do a little bit of a slideshow, I'll try and keep it brief and try to engage everybody, okay? Cause we have another part of the presentation after the slideshow where we're gonna come up to the front of the room here and you're gonna be able to do some drawing, and we have some little cutouts with some play, pictures of play equipment, and then you're also, you've already seen the pictures over here, and you're gonna be able to choose sort of vote on what you'd like to see in the playground, and there's some really exciting things that we think can happen here. But with all of those exciting things that we can, that can happen here, there's only so much space, right? You can only put so many things inside of a space. So, first of all, I wanna, so I'm gonna talk a little bit to the parents and a little bit, and to the selectmen, and, and to the kids, and I'll try and keep it, you know, sort of moving forward. So, this is a picture of, of the town hall site if you're a thousand feet in the air and looking straight down, okay? So, if you were in an airplane or helicopter, you would go and you would see the town hall, and the town hall, let's see if this, oh, there's a little hand. So, here's the town hall, right? There is Main Street on this side, there's a parking lot here, this is, whoops. This is the playground, the blue, that's the existing playground, which is closed, and there's another parking lot, and then up the hill, there's this little area here that I've circled in red, okay? And then, if you look out the window, don't do it right now, but if you look out the window, there's some trucks up there and some vans and things like that, and that's where we're gonna put the new playground, okay? And part of that, part of that playground is what you see in the yellow, which is kind of a big paved area right now, and that's nice and flat, we like that, but what we also have is a little bit of woods back there, right? There's a little bit of woods beyond the fence over there, and that's also gonna be part of the playground because everybody likes to go play in the woods, well, I did as a kid anyway. So, there's two parts of the playground, and one part we call designed play, which is in the yellow, and the other part we call natural play, which is in the woods, okay? It kinda makes sense, right? So, there's some pictures, if you've been here, hopefully, you know, I think a lot of you have grown up here, so maybe you've been up this hill and you see what it looks like back there, big paved area that's being used by the police and the DPW right now, and that's gonna turn into the playground. There's another view, looking down the hill. Okay, so just some pictures to get you a little bit oriented. So, what does design objectives mean? Whenever you draw something, whenever we try and draw something on a plan, there's rules, right? If you're gonna plan something out, you have to have rules. So, what are the rules that we're working with to make this playground? The first is like, who do we, who do we make the playground for? It's for kids, right? But which kids? Do we wanna have little kids, big kids? I think we wanna have a playground for all of the kids, even if you're a little baby, you should be able to use this playground, okay? You come with your parents, you come with a guardian, you come with your brothers or sisters, right up to your, you know, 12 years old. Beyond that, you're a little bit old to be playing in this type of playground, so we're not really thinking about older kids at this point, but we think we can have a playground that can have all these different ages playing, and there may be some different areas, you know, have little kids over here and bigger kids over there, and that's part of what we do, okay? The second thing is that, remember that designed play versus natural play, that yellow space versus the green space? We're gonna have those two areas of play, okay? We're not gonna cut, we're not gonna cut down any trees, we want you to like go into the woods and play. The third thing is that we're gonna, that says plan for all, it should've said play for all. Play for all regardless of physical ability, so if you have, if you're in a wheelchair or you have something where you need some help with the play with a parent or something, we want everybody to be able to use the play area, right? The fourth thing is that it's a space designed for the whole community. Now, it's called the playground, but, you know, adults should feel comfortable, senior citizens should feel comfortable coming here, not in a creepy way, but in a nice way to watch, to, you know, be part of the park and be with the kids, and so we want the whole place to be open to everybody in the town. The fifth thing is, and this goes to more of the adults in the room, is that we want this to be a durable playground and want it to be easy to maintain, it's gotta have, you know, made out of materials that are gonna last a long time because you're investing a lot of money into this facility. And then, we wanna design it for fun, right? We gotta have fun here, that's the whole point. We love doing playgrounds. So, I'm gonna look at a few slides, and these slides are exactly the same as what you see on the boards over there, so you have a more of a chance to go look at these pictures. But there's different ways to play, okay? There's all these different ways to play. You think of a playground as maybe going down a slide, or swinging on a swing, or just running around, but there's other ways to play too. This is called, this way to play, we're calling tactile and sensory. Can anyone say, know who's tactile? What does tactile mean? Anybody?
Tactile means that you feel and not work.
You feel it?
Yes.
Right, or touch, right? Tactile means touch, so things that you can touch, that's very important as, as part of a play. So, what do you see in these pictures that you can touch?
Water play.
Water, there's water, you can touch water, what else?
Sand.
Sand in there?
Yeah, the monkey bars.
You can touch the monkey bars? Those are things that you can touch and you can play with them, what's that?
Way in the back.
Way in the back, yes.
The slide.
The slide, and you can touch the slide, but we'll talk about slides in the next one, all right? But these are things that you can, that you can feel, right? And those things are movable, you can push it around, you can dig in it, you know, you can get a little bit dirty, it's okay to get a little bit dirty, right, parents?
Yep.
It's okay. The second way to, the second way to play, we call this involuntary movement, okay? What does that mean? That's things like a slide, you go down a slide, you swing on a swing, right? And for the parents, this is, this is very important for the physical development, it helps with creating a, get a sense of balance, helps you develop your sense of balance, you know, even things like a hammock there. What else do you see in this one?
This one.
You see a slide? I see that. What's, what about the red on the right?
Yellow.
What is it?
Merry-go-round.
Merry-go-round, and we call them spinners. They spin around, right? Makes you a little bit woo in the head. Then they have, then there's a, there's a swing up there, which is like a disc, it's kind of a round thing, it's a different kinda swing, okay?
Yeah, I like that swing.
You like that swing? Okay. So, so there's all these different ways to play. Another way to play, and this is what you really think about, strength and fitness, right? A lot of kids today, because of the way we've been designing playgrounds for a long, long time now, is that there's, we're afraid to go high, right? We don't wanna go high because somebody's gonna fall down and get hurt, but it's okay to have a little bit of danger, I think, you know? So, we call this, what was the term? Calculated risk?
Yes.
Calculated risk. These are designed with safety surfaces, it's designed so that if you fall from a certain height, you're not gonna get seriously injured, okay?
Challenging but safe.
Challenging but safe, right? We want to challenge you a little bit. The other thing that these, these little events do here, and you see a lot of climbing in these, a lot of pulling up, kids today don't have, have an underdeveloped upper body strength, and we really wanna encourage that, that pulling up kind of motion to develop their upper body strength. So, what do we see in here?
Monkey bars.
The one in the, the one in the middle, I like this one. What are they doing?
Climbing.
Climbing, it's like a climbing wall, but it's like invisible, right? The last, I think this is the last one. This is called imagination play. I know what that means, I think all of you know what that means too.
Yeah.
This is just providing things that are, that are open, okay? Things that we call an open-ended play, where you can make your own stories, you can pretend, you have little shelters, you have on the upper right there, there's a little kitchen you can see on the right, and a little house. So, these are very simple, on the ground, all the kids can access these, so these, these are just some different ways to play. The one on the left is a, those are willow branches that we make an arch out of, you can go and crawl through the willow tunnel. And then, the other thing that we're gonna ask you about, and maybe this is a little more for the parents, we have natural materials, and then we have what we call manufactured materials, which is plastic and metal and things like that. What you're having right now is a lot of metal out there, but there's other ways to do this where we're using wood, and it's very long-lasting, it kinda blends in, you know, blends in with the woods that you have here, and we're a big fan of that. Doesn't have to be all one or the other, it can be a little bit of both, right? So, we want your opinion on, on what you'd like to see there. And then, this, a little more for the parents, but, and our select board here, we just took some other playgrounds and kinda superimposed them on the site here, and this is, it's Cambridge, I know we're not in Cambridge, ignore that it says Cambridge. This'll be a Dudley playground, but, you know, you can see that there's a lot of, you can see in a small area, which we have a relatively small area here, we can pack a lot in, there's a lot of events that we can pack into this small space, so that's what we're just trying to show here. It's another one in Cambridge called Gold Star Mother's Park, this one has a water element in it, it's got climbing, you can see a little more metal being used in here and just different, and you can see how there's like, instead of like the one big central thing that you have here, which is very sort of directed play, you know, you can do this and then go to this and this, but it doesn't give the kids choices as much. This is more, you can see it's more spread out, there's more things like scattered all over the place, and it encourages what we call open-ended play, okay? Last one, and this is in Randolph, and again, you can see all the different items here. The one on the bottom is really interesting, those are sound, like chimes, you can beat on drums and make sound and things like that, so, so that's one. So, there's the proposed play area again, so what we're gonna do now, I think that was the end, yes. So, what we're gonna do now, I'm gonna have them do all because there's too many kids.
Okay.
So, thank you all for sitting through that mostly interesting slideshow, okay? Hopefully, you understand what we're talking about, what I'd like to do now, because there's so many people here, and I'm delighted that so many of the kids came out tonight, this is really great. I wanna take about 15 minutes, we're gonna put, we're gonna have a timer, and I've got a couple of sets of plans up here, you can come over here, wait, and we have markers here, and you can draw, we have pictures of the different play equipment that you can look at, you can put the play equipment out on the, on the plan, and we'll help you, okay? And then also, we have these boards over here, and we have stickies, and Holly has the, the dots, right? Hold up the dots.
Each of you is gonna get a strip of dots, and what we're hoping you will do is pick your six favorite pictures from all these boards of what you would like to see in the playground. So, you get to vote on your six favorite things of what you'd like to see, and I'll give each one of you a strip.
They have to go more than just...
So, you can do your dots, and then do the plans, or do the plans, and then do the dots.
Any questions before we... If you need more than, if you need more than 15 minutes, take it. We're not gonna cut anybody off.
This is good, it's the goal. Okay, everybody, come on up.
I'm going to go for the real, natural internet. That gave me an idea to make a comment from my desk to my board. I've never gone. Really? I had, I used to live in North Portwood and I had an old townhouse. I planted those around and sown them up because they grow. I mean, what you see there is like three, four years' growth. So sowing it to go up next to other trees and if the pot is like a pot, we do it. I don't know what the word is. I don't think it's a plant. 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 How many thoughts can the rest of the world have? Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff, Jeff, next question. I think this piece has a little bit of that. I think this piece has a little bit of that. I do.
Can you hear him?
To be seen, to see and be seen. So it's kind of a different...
So this isn't part of the meeting, that recorded meeting?
We should accommodate that in this space.
What's his name? Mike, could I bother you for a minute? Could you maybe come, like, orient yourself somewhere where we can, like, a microphone? Yeah, have a seat right here.
People come up. People come up because they can't hear it a whole month.
Yeah, and if, could you...
I'm Kathy Carmiani. Just to recap, I was saying that, you know, we talked about this space being a welcoming place for the community and we're missing that age group of middle school. And I think that, you know, we're not looking for, like, we don't want the middle schoolers intruding on the little guys or getting into their zones. But I think to have a space for them to be able to congregate is important. And, you know, you said it's kind of maybe impractical for that, but where else is there for them to go? And they're coming. No matter if it's impractical or not, they will be there. So I think we need to even just, even if it's just benches or seating areas, things like that, like, I could see them kind of like in the woods just hanging out in some of the, like, areas just to hang out in. And I think if we give them something that's productive and nice, they're going to keep it that way.
Yeah.
So...
Thanks for the comment.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and as I was unmiked when I was saying, when you get to that middle school age, it is a different type of social activity. It's not so much play anymore as it is kind of like hanging out. It's, the needs are a little bit different. You know, and when I said we want to make it a welcoming space for the whole town of all ages, you know, I meant it. It, you know, it needs to be welcoming for everybody. I think that, just like you have middle schools where you sort of focus your certain attention on that age group, I do, I do think that it's important for them to have their own space. So, you know, that's something to think about down the road.
I know you want me to, you want me to, Mr. Chairman. So, we're going to, this is a two-phase project. The first phase is the playground because by far the playground received the most outcry to get it reopened and up and running for the kids, including the equipment. So it's going to be, it's going to be a two-phase project. The first phase, and a lot of people might remember that there were easels set up in the lobby and it showed a green space in the playground. For this, this first round of grant funding, we're going to target the playground to try to get going on the playground. In the second phase, the second round of grant funding, we're going to try to target the open space, the green space, which will be located further down where the current playground is. And that'll have space for benches, hanging out, farmer's market, that sort of thing. But for this, for this particular first round of grant funding, it's, it's pretty much targeted the playground refurbishment and equipment.
That concludes our portion, if you want to...
That concludes. I see, I see a little hand in the back.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you come up to the podium? May, maybe your, whoever's with you can come as well, no?
She's going to speak right now.
Oh, never mind. We're self-sufficient. We're self-sufficient. Good job. Yes.
I didn't see it, but can you put a basketball hoop also?
Ah, basketball hoop. That's a good idea. Let's write that down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Future Select Board.
Yes.
Unpaid intern.
Hi. I know you talked about the green space or whatnot. Sorry. I'm just curious if, in these spaces, if there are some picnic tables for the parents that are bringing these kids or to be able to have a spot to have a little snack and sit down and...
Yeah.
There was one over here, but would that be built into this?
Yeah, we definitely are going to have seating for adults.
Okay.
I know, I don't want to stand the whole time.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Yeah, but having a place, you know, a table or something, or you bring some snacks and...
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? No, I don't see anyone. Well, I want to thank you very much, Mr. Redd.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, we're going to take all of these home and, and really study them because I didn't get to see everything while, while it was being drawn. Oh, we have one more question.
Oh, yes. From the blue.
So, well, that's louder.
Yeah, a little bit. You're fine.
So, if, um, it was just like, so, what if you put, like, I don't know how to say it, but like, a, um, really high slide?
A big slide?
Big slide.
Okay, we'll write that down.
Thank you.
They have, they have slides now that you can build in, in like a hillside where you can slide down a hillside and then climb back up.
Oh, there's another one.
They're just getting warmed up.
They're just getting warmed up. One started, here comes the flood, which isn't a bad thing at all.
Just bend it down a little bit. Here you go.
Um, okay. I feel like we should use more water stuff, like...
Like the water, water play?
Like stream, something like that?
A stream?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Wow, that's interesting.
Like you can make paper boats.
I'd like to vote for lazy river.
You can, you should make, like, paper boats. Like, paper boats to put on the river. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And you can fly it.
Thank you.
We had a lot of questions on timing.
We've got one more over here in the red.
I want to, I'll ask that one. You're going to ask what one? Yeah, that's it.
What if you put, what if you put this water slide?
A water slide.
That'll make Dudley a destination, Mr. Chairman.
Let's just make a water park and be done with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Mr. Marcy, you had a question?
Yeah, so, can you talk a little bit about the process from here, the timeline, like, how this is going to work, grant application, any, any... Oh, what? Pause.
Bill's still there? Yeah, Bill's there. He, Bill can help with that question, Mr. Chairman.
A little go-kart track.
A go-kart track?
Oh, yeah.
A little one.
We've, we've done a little, I don't know about go-karts, but we do like a little paved trek path that goes around the playground.
Bill?
Do you want to talk about, Bill, you want to talk about the grant application?
Bill, there he is. We've heard from the junior planners, now the actual planner.
Question about process and timing.
The grants and everything, like...
Well, thank you. Michael, thank you for this workshop. It's been, you know, really interesting to hear all these comments. So the thought from tonight is to take all this feedback and for you to create plans of a new playground. And then, once we have those plans prepared, we can go ahead and submit a grant application, which I think is due in July. So if we can get, you know, the plans and the cost estimates prepared within a couple of weeks, we should be able to go ahead and apply for a grant to, you know, put in this playground. As far as I know, it's a, it's a 70% state grant with the town contributing 30%. So depending on what the cost is, the town will have a significant share of it. But, you know, I think, you know, given the community support that we've seen here tonight, I think, you know, that shouldn't be too hard to come up with that local match. But I think it's very promising. It, it checks all the boxes for this, for that kind of a grant program. So I'm pretty, pretty hopeful that we would be able to get that grant.
And then, once the grant is approved, we would do bid plans. So we'd have to go to public bid.
Well, we've already gone down.
We tried that. That's a good idea.
That's a good idea, we tried that. And I saw one more hand. Where was it? I guess there it is.
How about, um, putting in maybe one or two of those little, little free libraries? Kind books?
That's a nice idea. Thank you.
Ah, that's a good idea.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was great.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank all of you for coming. This is a great turnout, a lot of good information, glad you got to vote on this. Thank you all for coming, seriously, parents and children.
Yes, thank you.
That's probably we've had in a long time. It's really good to see.
Very productive.
A lot of positive vibe and energy.
Good stuff. Good job for you too.
Good to see you, folks.
Bye, Johnny.
Yeah, well, I'm.
Bye, thank you for coming.
Yep, that was good. Good seeing you, John. Thank you for your choice, very good.
All right, so, next on the agenda, we have the Town Administrator's Report. Town Administrator Updates Board of Selectmen on FAA Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year '25. Board of Selectmen Takes Any Action Relative There Too.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to put this up on the screen real quick. This is not going to be a long process.
Which one are we going to? Bottom one?
Mr. Chairman, I had a chance to meet with the FAA. They met, um, they met last week on, actually on March 25th. Just to bring everybody up to speed, we, we've already had an initial discussion about the school assessment. We plugged it as voted from the School Committee into the town budget, and we've already had that first discussion. If you look at the sheet near packets, that's now up on the screen as well, it's marked for 824 School Assessment. Just as a reminder, on March 13th, Superintendent Homarsh recommended a $1,207,899 increase. Following that, the School Committee voted, with the exception of one member, for an amount of $1,471,058. And then, when we met on, with the FAA on March 25th, the FAA voted to recommend $1,213,166. So both the superintendent's recommendation and the FAA's recommendation to the Board of Selectmen is a 11% increase over last year, as opposed to what was voted, 13.5% by the School Committee. So, we've already plugged the School Committee's voted amount into the budget. We've discussed that. What I'd like to do is get an indication or an idea from the Board of Selectmen if they'd like me to move forward with plugging the FAA's recommended assessment amount, which is, it's about $5,000 more than what the superintendent recommended. And we could probably get together and have a joint meeting with them on Thursday, one way or another, but I'm just looking for some direction from the Board at this point.
So the, the FAA recommended amount was how, how much in relation to either amount, the superintendent's or the School Committee's recommendation or voted amount?
The School Committee voted amount was $263,159 more than the superintendent's recommendation. The superintendent's recommendation was $1,471,58. The FAA's recommend, and the superintendent in his recommendation did not include any additional amount. He did the minimum at $667,880. He did the transportation amount at $257,892. And I made some further adjustments. And the amount was 200 and, I'm sorry, the amount, the amount was $263,159 more when the School Committee voted than the superintendent's recommendation.
So as we're looking at these three, the top number is what the superintendent had recommended or the FAA?
The higher number is the recommended, recommended amount from the FAA by 5,267, it looks like.
Got it.
So, Mr. Giagos.
Mr. Sullivan.
If I'm reading this right, to the administrator, it goes superintendent, School Committee vote, FAA vote.
Okay.
Correct.
I see it now, it just updated on my screen, thank you.
And so, I'll let the, we'll have a joint meeting and I'll have the FAA discuss their reasoning and rationale for their assessment amount. They believe, without getting too far into the weeds, they believe that the governor's budget is going to be changed, it's, it will be a higher amount. It's only funded at 80% of last year, so they've actually removed the additional transportation number from what the School Committee voted. Whereas the superintendent, it looks like he removed any additional funding from his budget. So he had the minimum in the transportation amount, and he slightly reduced the additional amount.
Thank you. This is Carmiani.
Mic's still low. Okay, I just want to clarify a couple things for you. I'm Kathy Carmiani, Chair of the School Committee. When the, when the School Committee saw the superintendent's budget, the superintendent had two different budget versions. He had the, the level service budget, which is what we voted on, and we voted to go with that one. And that, the one that was the reductions, reduced all of middle school foreign language and it reduced any transportation after school, like late buses and things like that. So, at that point, we, as a School Committee, did not feel it was the right time to start making those cuts, knowing that we did not have the, the, we didn't know what was happening on the state level. So what I talked with FAA about was that, you know, we knew, we have a starting budget amount, and, you know, we are willing and ready, if we get more money from the state, we can work with that and work with both the towns. We're not looking, you know, we're, we're looking to be above board with everything.
Okay.
And, and exactly what Mr. Ruda said with the FAA was that, when they assessed it, they were looking at that, we estimated that we would get 80% reimbursement for transportation, and Mr. Mayett felt that we would get up 90 or higher. So he kind of cut the transportation amount down.
Is there, is there, there's no definitive amount on that, correct, yet?
There's not yet. We, so we have our meeting on Wednesday. I don't, and I don't expect us to make any new budget amount on Wednesday because it's just too early. We think it may come in within this week or the next couple of weeks. So we're hoping to make a budget, another budget round recommendation if, if need be. We're meeting with the Town of Charlton tomorrow night.
Mr. Marcy?
Just, just to clarify everybody, the governor's budget comes out on Wednesday, so.
Right, so, but it'll be too early for us to really look at it and.
Right.
Anything else?
I, I don't think so. I'm, you know, one of the things, we want to make sure that the town understands that we're, you know, we're definitely willing and able to work with the town. We just, you know, at our last school, when we had you come to our School Committee meeting, we had heard from several members that Selectmen had talked to them, and, not members, but residents in the area that were there, that you had talked to them about the Assistant Superintendent and that that must be coming out of the budget. And we just need you to know that the importance of having an Assistant Superintendent, right now, our, our, our central office is drowning. You know, we've already lost, we lost our, our Finance Director. It was really tough trying to find a new Finance Director with experience, and we can't continue the way we're going. We're losing grant opportunities because our Assistant Superintendent is the one that can bring in grant money, and we're losing the ability to have someone that's there to, to really watch over how our children are doing every day. So for us, it's an essential position, and it's restoring a position. We're not adding a new position. I just want to make sure, if, if any of you have any comments or questions about it, I welcome you to ask us so that we can have a conversation in public about that.
I'll, I'll ask a question.
Sure, go ahead.
So, what I'm hearing is, after-school buses, middle school foreign language.
Yep.
Isn't as much of a priority as the Assistant Superintendent. I'm not saying that either should be cut, I'm not saying that either should be included. I just, which one is the higher priority in your mind?
The Assistant Superintendent.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why, just what I, some of the things I talked about, but it's also that that's the position that's going to bring in money into, with grants into our, it's going to infuse grant money into our schools, and it, it's an accountability, accountability measure. You know?
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
I'm not sure Kathy have this, and I apologize if it. How many ESER positions are carried over into the budget? Because when they were, the ESER positions, Mr. Lamarche had came before us, maybe, before the override vote, he was saying how the ESER positions were grant-funded, like our COVID CARE Act stuff. How many ESERS were kept on, do you know, offhand?
Um, I don't want to misspeak, and I know that the, I, I don't think the superintendent was told that we were going to be talking tonight, so I apologize.
If you don't have it, that's fine.
I don't want to speak offhand. I, I think that we still have two middle school adjustment counselors that we're trying to keep on board, and we've kind of weaved other positions in and out to make sure that we keep them. And we have some nursing coverage that we're using a grant money, grant, some other grant money for.
Okay, I can, I can have somebody reach out and get the, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, if you want, the superintendent's more than welcome to, more than willing to come to a meeting, he just needs to know.
Yeah.
What you want us to talk about and when you want us to talk about it.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Anything, buddy?
Is he coming Thursday? That might be a good.
As soon as you give me the nod that we're going to have a meeting Thursday.
Oh, I thought.
Are we having a meeting Thursday?
If you'd like to have a joint meeting with the FAA, I would suggest that we have it Thursday and we'll post it tomorrow morning. I just wanted to know which budget to work with.
Is the, is the FAA aware of a potential meeting?
Yes.
And?
They're waiting to see what the Selectmen want to do.
We'll talk about that. Any thoughts from the, anything else for Kathy? Do you have anything else?
No. Like I said, I just, if you have any comments at all, like, I just want to make sure that we're talking to each other and that, you know, it's not, we're hearing things from other people. I want to make sure that we, we have that communication out with each other. I know that in your presentation the other night, like, I think we have to be careful about when we talk about the budget, the capital money is included, like, when you talk about the 11%, it's, you know, our capital is something that shouldn't, it's not part of the regular operating budget. So I don't want to confuse the public, thinking that we're asking for over and above.
I, I'll touch on confusing information in a moment, but the reason I did that was because I, I first did that for myself, and I did it by the assessment. And I, it, I have been, one person said that I had a narrative, and I didn't. If I had a narrative, I would have used the first two years.
Right.
And extrapolated that trend, but I went five years. And I looked at the assessment, and I got the numbers from the town accountant. I didn't, there was no narrative. My reason for doing that is because I think people need to know what's coming. And I'm not trying to tell people to vote for or against anything. I mean, it's no secret I'm a product of this school, and I did reasonably okay. It's, people shouldn't be surprised, a month before a town meeting vote, that there's an override coming. And I'm not saying there's one coming next year, possibly, the year after that, I think so. I think at, at the rate everything's going, probably four or five out of the next 10 years, we're going to have overrides. And I'm not saying people should or shouldn't vote for that, but they should know about it. I mean, I said you're talking about communication. When, when I went to the School Committee meeting on Valentine's Day, I thought we were going to, I thought we'd have at least preliminary numbers, and we didn't.
Right.
I, in, in the future, I would, if we're going to have a joint meeting like that, at least preliminary numbers, something to plan. I mean, I think, I think all of us in our personal lives, we plan more than just a couple months down the road. We plan in the future. We've got a plan. And I don't, I think last year, up until last year, I think people just were kind of, I mean, even myself, kind of just a little bit of a zombie, kind of, so to speak, in the way that it always figures out. We always figured it out, every year. Last year, we didn't. And now people are paying attention, and they're asking for information transparency, they're asking for audits, what have you. It's just, this is what it was the past five years. And then, I had three people in Park and Shop asked me, they said, "Why are you cutting the schools?" Right in the Webster Times, level-funded budget. And it says that two weeks ago. Where did they, I, I don't understand that. And I'm not trying to start anything, communication.
Right.
I think, because what happens is, people see taxes going up, well, wait, schools got level-funded, they're cutting. It's, it's you guys, and it isn't. I just, I just want everything out in the open, kind of like it was here, out on the tables, out in the open. Where did they get the level funding from? In the article, the Webster Times article, two weeks ago.
I'm not sure what it's referring to. I, we, I mean, this is a level, the amount that the School Committee voted for is level funding our students.
I, I think I'm misunderstanding level funding, because level funding means the same amount.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, level service.
Okay.
Level service, thank you.
Would, would you mind correcting that with the Webster Times? I just.
I can certainly talk to them.
I just, I just, yeah.
I'll, I'll have, I'll ask the School Committee, I'll ask the superintendent to talk about them about that.
But there was no ill will with that. It was, I don't want people to be surprised in two years that there's an override. And like I said, I'm not saying it, it should or shouldn't. Our taxes are some of the lowest in the area. People need to decide what they want.
Correct, and the same goes to, you know, I talked to the FAA on, when I was here before, about, you know, I don't want to have surprises about, we are going to need to think, to think about what, what needs to happen in Shepherd Hill to get it to be serviceable if we're not going to build a new high school, which was clearly something Dudley voters don't want to do, and I understand that. We have to make sure that we have, you know, we might have to, you know, replace the roof coming up, and, and it's, it's a building that needs some attention.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt it does. Last time I was in there, that was obvious.
Yep.
But it's, I, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, we're, you're going to have more luck getting, getting things that you need on, on all sides, when people know what's coming down the road. And I'm not trying to scare anyone, I, I could be wrong. We could have, we could be flush with free cash over the next few years, and we might not be fine. But if things keep going the way they are, we should plan for it, that's all.
Right, agreed.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Chair, too, it shows up on this chart, and you, you touched on it, Kathleen, just kind of a little bit too. Part of the assessment figure, which I saw, Mr. Marcy kindly forwarded me some stuff that people were dinging the Board of Selectmen in your presentation last week, the amount of the on. in your presentation last week, the amount of the bond for the roof, the capital bond, comes due no matter what. If it's showing up in the assessment, which somebody said skewed the number, or if it doesn't, if it doesn't show up in the assessment, it shows up on the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ruda, the general government side, and we have to pay for it out of either reserves, if we have any at the end of this, because I'm looking at the number he provided us, $900,000 in reserves being used out of 1.2999, that 351 has to come due no matter what. So the schools are showing in their, in their assessment, but that money is not coming out of the schools, is what I'm getting at. It's going to come out of the town somehow. I know Charlton did their projects that's separate for them, but that figure has to be accounted for, whether it shows up in the assessment, or if we remove it, it becomes a, a debt, a deficit on the town side.
But that, that's a double-edged sword, because, yeah, it costs money, but if you've been in the middle school before the roofs were done, you know that, that place needed a new roof.
I agree, I, I agree with the project, and the people that showed up in 22 clearly voted for it. And the question that night, most heard in the polls and outside, was, "So we just voted for it?" The answer was, "Yeah, we didn't pay for it." So people that were forward-thinking to make the repairs, my daughter was a teacher there, so I, I understand how bad it was. Now have to come forward again, and we have to somehow figure out the funding mechanism. My only point was, after your presentation last week, people were dinging you on it, saying, "Well, he shows the assessment," and I said, "No, that's a capital, that's not this, that." Well, guess what? It's got to be paid. It either shows up in the assessment number, or it shows up as a negative on the town budget.
People want to ding me, people can.
No, I know, I know you're going to Charles, but.
But some people want to complain, and if they want to complain, they could complain. This is where stuff gets solved.
Right.
And we've got to, we've got to solve this.
And we talked about that last year, when we talked about how the, we had a money coming off the capital for the, for the town, and, you know, do we put it back on at this point, and, and prepay some of the roof or not? And I think what we thought about is, like, trying to get the lowest tax rate for our citizens as possible. Was that not what we kind of decided last year?
I believe so.
What, you, I'm sorry, you decided last year? So, I mean, I think that we knew that this was coming, and it's here.
You know, and you touched on it, too, and not to cross, but the Treasurer made it clear more, more than once, he's got enough, he's talked about maintaining a certain level of debt, because it gives you a certain amount of fixed cost mentality in your budget preparation. And we're not saying it's way up here, we're not saying it's way down there, but I know Rich has talked about it several, if not many times. I can't put a number on it, but it's good to have a certain amount, because it gives you that certain definitive number when you do your budget process, above and beyond all the other stuff.
Anything else?
Nope.
No?
Okay. So, will someone call the superintendent if you decide to have a meeting? So we know that, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, where were we? Mr. Ruda, I'm sorry, my brain just went to.
I just need some direction, first, for two things. First, would the Board like me to plug in the FAA recommended amount, and draw a draft budget based on that?
Let's, let's start that.
And then, second, should we have a joint on Thursday?
Let's start with the first. Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion, that we instruct the town administrator to take the FAA recommended amount of $12,151,157, and use that as a budget number, as Mr. Ruda brings his budget forward.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just so I'm, I'm clear on it, Mr. Chairman, you want me to plug in the amount of the FAA recommended, 1,213,166?
I apologize, I read the total number. Yes, I'm sorry, I withdraw that with the second.
I don't want anybody to get the wrong idea.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Certainly not, yeah.
Yeah, my fault. I gave the, the big number. FAA recommended increase of 1.213,166 dollars increase, and have them use that figure as a starting point for his budgetary presentations.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? So this is, this is an 11% increase, and I, Proposition 2 and 1/2, we can't spend more than 2 and 1/2% of the levy, so at some point, we're going to have to come up with more money at this rate of spending. That's the whole point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, pretty quick, too.
That's all. Yep.
I'll be quick. I just want the public to understand that while it may be an 11% increase, like what you're talking about on the assessment, it is not an 11% increase in our overall budget. It's just the way the assessments are done, that it's, I thought it was like a 2.86% increase in our budget, but I, I want to make sure, I, I'll give the exact right figure of that on Thursday. But I just need the public to understand that that's not where we are, although it is the reality of the assessment.
Yeah, and I understand that your budget goes up at a different percentage than this.
Yes.
But this is.
Correct. I just, I think that's hard for the public to understand, and understand the nuances of that. So I want to make sure they do.
No, there's two different stories. There's where your budget is and what it costs them.
Right.
And what it costs them is a much more dramatic increase than what your budget's going up.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Correct.
Thank you.
Understood.
But the figure, the figure we're going to vote on is the actual dollar and cent liability increase.
The assess, assessment.
Assessment that we're going to have to come up with.
Correct. So we have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Anything else? Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have departmental communication. Rich, would you like to go first?
Oh, Thursday night.
Oh, do we need, can we do that out of order, or?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I skipped, I skipped ahead, I apologize. Thursday night meeting. What's the Board's pleasure?
I may not be able to make it. I have a previous engagement with Alpham. If I can move it, I'll be here. If not, I probably won't be able to make it.
How many people do you need in person for that? Is, is there still?
Well, I need a quorum on either side.
So a quorum is including remote, correct?
I can't do a remote.
Yeah, we could do a remote. We could do a remote.
You don't need three for, you don't need three in person anymore?
You need, well, let me double-check on that. I think you need three to open it, and then allow remote participation, I think. But let me double-check that.
I might have to bring Jessica, but probably.
Okay.
She likes budget meetings.
She likes the candy.
What's the Board's thoughts on a Thursday night meeting at 6:30, joint meeting with the FAA, Mr. Marcy?
I think we should have it, Mr. Chairman, just so everybody's on the same page, and it's always a good discussion to understand the differences and nuances between the different budgets, so we can explain, this is the path we're taking as the next starting point, as Mr. Sullivan was saying.
Excellent. Is that a motion?
Oh, okay, he made the motion, but.
No.
Oh, the reason to have it.
He made the first one.
I just said that I'll be here if I can, but there's a chance I may not. I'll make the motion if you want.
Oh, I'm, Mr. Chairman.
I just want someone to make the motion.
Chairman, I move that we, we have a meeting with the FAA on this coming Thursday.
And invite the school committee?
Invite the school committee and superintendent, please. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Bring Charlton Board in if you want.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Thank you, Carmen Yanni, for your patience. Go ahead.
I'll keep it simple. I inadvertently wore a pink shirt. How many people got a pink bill today for an unpaid excise or a yellow?
Was it subliminal, Rich, when they walked in?
It's, it's not a subliminal. It's, it was, it was the wheel of clean laundry, just, you know, three sixes going across. Two items, Mr. Sullivan had made mention of it. You should have a portion of debt, ideally debt excluded, so you could keep up with the Joneses. Remember, there is a component of the school assessment that's, that has a wealth factor in it, and the regional growth factor in it. It gets Byzantine into how far it goes into details. But simply put, instead of having a strip mall pop up overnight, you're able to address some of the capital concerns through that debt exclusion. Personally, I think there's some reassurance when you're paying for something for the regional school that has a finite beginning and end date for it. So I agree, there should be a component that's planned to be on there for today. There should be an optimal amount. Obviously, you don't know what the future is going to be. That's part of your capital improvement. You sort of see what's coming down. There should be that engagement with the school committee that, whatever the percentage is, is held pretty constant, so that your tax rate vacillates. You won't be able to control what the market does as far as the actual tax rate and the market rate, as far as moving things. But you, you could control as many of the variables as you possibly could. The other item for the Thursday meeting, State Representative Marcy had made mention that there's going to be some numbers coming out of Boston. I think it would be great to share those items. I'm sure the second part of those numbers might have a narrative. In last year's budget, they had pointed to certain increases in cost or reimbursements not up to inflation. It would be good to have the best information that comes out. And again, the decision for the funding is made outside of this room, but coming in, it's a solid number. The FAA were concerned about a specific number, and the speculation was, yes, it's going to be positive news for Dudley. Well, when a number comes out from the state, we should be able to look at it objectively and say, "We were planning on this number, and it's higher or lower, and there's an X percentage chance that it is a solid number," finally passing, passing its way through the hallway. I'd, I'd love to see that. On a personal note, it was great to have this place packed. I was on the FAA in the summer of 2000, and I remember on more than one occasion, having to get more chairs. Not that it would be raucous, as some of those meetings had, had sort of been, but well-attended. It's, it's better government, and I think this is a good thing. This is community engagement. I'm happy that that many people were here, starting to get more and more regulars to this meeting. One final thing, Thursday, Thursday during the day, there's going to be a meeting of the Hampshire Council of Government's Insurance Trust. We will open up, open enrollment, just for all of the employees, other retirees as well. But once you've retired, you've sort of taken a snapshot, and you're not changing your health insurance as you take off in your Winnebago and write the great American novels. So we already know what the rate increase is, it's just a matter of who might not be taking the insurance. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gatski, do you have anything? No? Fire chief? Nothing? Police chief? Thank you all. Student rep, she's at a tennis meet tonight. Hope she does well. Board member comments, Mr. Sullivan?
No, Mr. Chairman, again, it was outstanding to see the community involvement tonight. So many youths here, they have young, young children with their families, and help people understand now what we've been up against with the playground. It was a process. Mr. Ruda and Mr. Scallan, our town planner, and others have been helping to spearhead that grant. We had to follow a process, and we certainly appreciate, as you stated before, all the donations, yeah, Dudley Women's Club, who spearheaded it, and continue to this day, raising money. And if we didn't have that, we wouldn't be where we are now. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Landry?
Yes, sir. It was, it was a great night. I like seeing all the, the children pick out what they want, because it's going to affect them. And the parents bringing them here to get them involved, that's awesome, because it's going to affect them as well, and it gives them a place to go. All the donors did an amazing job, and they continue to. The Recreation Commission has been doing a wonderful job, starting that up and getting it moving along. I want to thank everybody on, on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. And Mr. Marcy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this was, this was a fun night, watching all the kids do that. I mean, they, they get a little, get to vote on their own stuff, parents bringing them, having them come up to the mic, that's like shows, you know, that they weren't afraid to do it. So that was, that was, this was one that I'll remember for a long time. So thanks to everybody involved with that, and looking forward to next steps. That will get turned back into a fun zone.
Not a no-fun zone?
Not a no-fun zone, a fun zone. So as we said earlier, the governor's numbers come out on Wednesday. Looking forward to, you know, some positive news there. Revenues were down most of the month, so cautiously optimistic. Dudley's Chapter 90 money, which got approved by the House last Wednesday, which has to go to the Senate, came in at 426,586. So just in interest of getting that number out there, that's what we, that's what we have so far. And that's all I have so far, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Marcy. And as, as has been said already, it's great having people in here, and I've said this a million times, and I'll say it a million more if I have to. You have to show up to get things done. Conversations and decisions happen in person. They don't happen anywhere else. This is where the stuff gets done, and we got some stuff done today, and we've got more to do. Board's pleasure for adjournment.
Quick question. We're, we're, are we going to go through the warrant, Mr. Chairman, on Thursday as well, or is it just the, the school budget?
Well, that's part of the moving pieces.
Okay.
So with, with, that's, that's one of the reasons why I wanted the, the answer for what, what number to plug in, because if we plug in the FAA's recommended amount, it gives us, it, it gives us the ability to move 260-some-odd thousand dollars around that we otherwise would be taking out of, out of stabilization to fund the first voted-upon amount. So some of those, of course, will be spending articles on the warrant, some will be from free cash now, rather than from stabilization. And we can prioritize things like grant and project design, regulatory and compliance, and try to keep our expenses under control with purchasing items such as, you know, for capital items like police cruises and so forth. Those numbers, one of the, one of the things that the Capital Improvement Committee noted at the last meeting was that the, the, the cost of just a cruiser alone has gone up, and we're going to have to do an end-of-year transfer, but has gone up like $14,000 since the town meeting initially approved the purchase of five cruises. So as we wait and wait, just like if you're buying a car out of the dealership over the last five years, up it goes. So.
Crazy. Most new adjournments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.